Okay, we are good now.
I would like to welcome you all to the Thursday, January ninth, twenty twenty five, um, meeting of the Bellamy Planning Board. We have an agenda in front of us and we're gonna take it a little bit out of order to hopefully speed things up. Uh, Rob, um, did you just mention, I don't think the public was on when you mentioned it? Fifty seven Mendon Street.
Yeah.
Ask for continuation.
Correct, they're working through the, the design, uh, their peer review comments, so. Um, they've requested continuance to February twenty seventh, we have the deadline extension, um. And then I sent a little update on.
Yeah.
Just some work that was done previous, so in that email, but, um, anyway, that's where we're at.
And they've addressed a little other concerns of the neighbors temporarily, correct, with a small burn.
Correct, it'll be permanent if the plans get approved, so.
And then I think we have technically a continuation of public hearing on zero Maple Street Assessors Map thirty seven lots three and three A.
Before you get to that, I would just.
Okay, vote for a vote.
I would, yeah, I recommend, uh, somebody make a motion to continue.
Motion.
The public hearing for fifty seven Mendon Street to February twenty seventh.
I have a second.
Second, Nick.
We have a motion made in seconds to continue the public hearing for fifty seven Mendon Street to, uh, February twenty seventh. Oh, we call for the vote.
Nick, I.
Brian, I.
Bill, I.
Bill, I.
Steve, I.
That motion passes unanimously. We also have a continuation, as I said, on zero Maple Street. Well, technically, I believe we have two.
Correct, there are two, there's the development plan and then there's a scenic road and special permit.
And what do they want to continue to?
They want to continue to the next meeting, so I actually, I talked to the engineer. Uh, earlier this week, they're also working through the last bit of, uh, comments that they have with their review and, um. They were actually hoping to, to get something in for this meeting, however, we would have received it within a day in advance, which we don't want, so. Um, they're gonna be continuing to the next meeting.
So.
So that's January. Twenty third.
We have a motion, uh, we have a motion for continuing the public hearing. For the development plan for zero Maple Street, as well as the scenic road special permit plan.
Second, that, Nick.
We have a second. Any discussion? I'll call pull up, Steve will start with you.
Steve, I.
Bill, I.
Bill, I.
Brian, I.
Nick, I.
That motion passes unanimously. The next item is a continuation of a public hearing on defendant subdivision on three oh six Maple Street. You bring us up to speed on that.
Yeah.
Do we have anyone here from three oh six?
Yeah, so Mike Dryden is here with Allen Engineering, the representative, um. Basically, we had the hearing, there was some discussion, I know we had the draft decision, Mike wanted to go back and review that and discuss with the client. Um, there was also, which should be in their packets, the, there was a waiver request that was submitted, um, I can kind of go over. I think Mike wants to talk a little bit about this and I can just kind of reiterate how, I think the decision encompasses what we need as a board where it satisfies. The submittal requirements also covers the basis for the board when in the future, if this were to ever get built, the development plan approval is what really. It really is what carries weight with these items and that is a decision, um. But I can go into that later, I know, Mike, if you want to talk.
Sure.
Uh, well, it's your, sorry, Mr. Chair, it's your meeting.
Well, sure. Thank you, uh, again, Mike Dryden, Senior Project Manager, Allen Engineering, um, I'm not sick, but my voice is a little weak this evening, so please bear with me.
Famous last words.
Um. So we were at the, just about the one yard line a month ago with the decision and I did have an opportunity just before the last meeting to go through. And there were just a couple of minor things and I just thought it made some sense to just step back and kind of really consume this and, and understand, so. There was a mention of relief being granted in the decision and there's, there's four items, really three items that. There's an argument as to whether or not waivers are even needed. And as you all know, the whole reason that we're here is to freeze the zoning for this property, so. My concern was if there's any doubt whatsoever that a waiver needs to be granted, let's just formally request it and have the board vote. So I'll just take you very quickly through the four waivers that I requested in this December sixteenth, uh, memorandum. After the last meeting and we had this discussion, so traffic analysis, it, it's gray because. On the Form K, which is referenced in your subdivision rules and regulations, it's listed that a traffic analysis is required for a definitive subdivision. Yet under, under, um, chapter two forty six, which governs your traffic impact analysis. We clearly don't even come close to the trigger of trips, so that's just an example of how it's a little gray. Rob's under the opinion that it's a subdivision road, we're not proposing any buildings, therefore, the real traffic is generated during development plan approval phase. Which in this case, we'll never get to because this is just a fictitious plan to freeze zoning, so. That's why I formally requested a traffic analysis waiver. Um, we don't trigger the threshold, but Form K lists it, so just to, in quotes, perfect the filing, I requested a waiver. The second waiver is for the environmental analysis, we did provide that, but there's a couple of little sections in there that we didn't quite touch on. Again, those things, um, such as phosphorus loading, it's. These impacts are, are associated with future development under a development plan approval, which we're not proposing at this time. So I included that as a waiver. The third one, I think is very clear that it's not required or not applicable to this project whatsoever, but again, it's listed as a checkbox item to be submitted with a definitive. This is certification by an attorney that submission of a definitive plan has been agreed to by all landowners. We only have one landowner who signed all the applications, so it clearly is not applicable. But it's a checkbox, so I put it on the waiver list. Um, finally, planning board procedures under section seven, post-construction stormwater management. We have no intention of even building this project, so. To Rob's point, he would, he would prefer to condition the approval. Uh, that was your thought during the last meeting and, and based on our most recent conversations. And the thought was perhaps the waivers aren't even needed, but again, me just, you know, under an abundance of caution. Um, thought that it would just be the easiest, safest thing to do to put these four waivers in a formal. Does, does that, did I make that clear?
You did. Yeah. I guess that's the feeling more than you think we are.
Yeah, I think.
As you know, the board has some concerns.
Yeah, and, you know, I think, it might, I think you, you did a very good job explaining it, I'd still. I'm of the opinion that there, there's no waivers that are, are needed to be granted, I, I feel that. What is being requested for waivers is a submission requirement and. By rendering an approval, the board is implying that they feel that they have made a decision based on having adequate information. The issue becomes that because there's some items in here, such as the traffic study, that. You can't really generate a traffic study for something that doesn't generate traffic, that it would come in later during a development plan approval and there's, if there becomes a more definitive plan. With that, the approval gets conditioned that, you know, prior to construction, you can't put a shovel on the ground without getting a development plan approval. So that's where it covers the bases for the board, so, um. I mean, that's, that's how I drafted this decision, um, I feel that if, that's the route to take, um. That, that's. Yes, that's my update, um, because this was submitted, uh, you know, we can include it as part of the record. Um, as a waiver request, I don't know if the board necessarily needs to vote on waivers, um, I guess that would be up to you.
So I would like to see it submitted as a request to not vote it on, I like the language as we've written it so far. Of all these, and it's just one opinion, these are waiver requests, down the road, we can come back and catch them as we need.
Well, that's.
That isn't the correct word, but.
It's, yeah, because you're not, you're not waiving, so let's.
So, let me ask, may I?
Sure.
So. At this point, I don't feel like this individual board member wants to vote positively on these waivers. I would feel at this point that I wouldn't, that I would vote positively on the decision as it's written, um. The waivers that are in there, I don't think we ought to, you know, it's a request for waiver, I, I mean, quite frankly, I think we ought to vote and deny every one of them. Um, in the decision that says relief has been granted, I'm not sure about like that word, those, that phrase in there. But I think we ought to vote and I'm gonna vote no on all of those waivers, because I don't think they're gonna be there. You know, if you're talking individually on, um, the traffic study. And, you know, was a traffic study submitted for a one through that cul-de-sac, I don't think it was, so if that's the case. We, we didn't have the information to evaluate it. You know, the environment analysis, you know, we were going down the path, but we didn't get there, um, for me, the, you know. The, you know, looking at the post-construction storm, you know, stormwater management, that's part of our decisions all the time. And the third one, you know, certified by an attorney, that submission of the subdivision plan has been agreed to by all landowners. I would like you to, you know, if you're saying that you need to supply that, then, or a waiver, supply it. I guess that's my feelings, and, and I don't know, I'm one member that would vote, but that's where I stand.
Explain to me, if we were to vote, anyone else have any comments before I?
Can I just maybe like, just to clarify.
Clarify.
Then, because I think this is gonna make things a little bit easier, because it, I think, I get where you're coming at, Phil.
Yeah.
And I think this is, this is where the, the language was drafted, I think, in a way that it works. A prime example of a waiver request that we get all the time is the requirement to have, I don't know, it's like, I think, four test pits in a stormwater basin. A lot of times, there's two that are dug and then applicant requests a waiver to not do the additional two test pits. Since I've been here, we've never granted that waiver, it's been conditioned that the two test pits are done previous to construction.
With the reason that we didn't want to tear down trees down.
That's.
To do the testing beforehand.
That's exactly it, so, and this is where I don't believe that it would be necessary to grant a waiver, I think that this is covered in this decision. As being part of the development plan approval where there's actual approval guidance, so.
May I ask a technical question to perfect? This decision, it would have to be posted, thirty days would go by and then you would submit it to the, the registry of deeds, that's perfecting it, right?
Yeah, so.
And there's a chance that it could be appealed.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's perfected at that point, right?
Yeah, so it is, the process would be if you approve this decision.
Yeah.
Um, you would, yes, you would, it would be signed, it would then be posted with the town clerk, the court.
Probably thirty days, is it?
It's thirty or twenty.
Thirty or twenty.
The top of my head, but yeah, there's an appeal period and then once that is done, the town clerk issues the. Uh, approval with a certification letter stating that the appeal period is ended and then that's when it gets recorded with the registry.
And that's the perfected piece of it.
Yeah, that's like the finalized decision, so.
Okay.
Steve, uh, I'm just curious. What, what exactly is your concern if these waivers aren't voted on and the decision is without the waiver, what, what's, what's your concern?
My initial concern was exactly what Phil brought up, it, it mentioned relief in the decision when I read it, and we had a few minutes to read it before the last meeting. So it caused me a little concern, I have no issue is if this board wants to just put this in the file, this waiver request, to not act on it, I have no issue on that. As, as was stated by Mr. Lucier, if this board chooses to vote on this project, you're acknowledging that you are happy with the submittal. Um, and ultimately are willing to approve it, I am fine with that. I just thought that if there was anything that was gray whatsoever, that it was just an easy thing to do to request the waiver, that way. Everybody, we, everybody's on the same page, everybody knows exactly what was voted on, again. If it, if it's the pleasure of the board not to act on these waivers, I'm fine with that. I would like the project approved, of course, I mean, we've been working pretty diligently on getting this approval, um. And again, I, 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 just a, a little bit of a rebuttal to your comments, um. If. You were saying if we were to submit or, or you would deny the waivers, well, if, if you wanted me to, to submit a traffic report, what would I submit it based on? Because we're not, we're not developing the property, so we don't, we, I can't.
Sightlines.
That's, that's just an example.
Those types of things.
I, I understand that. Our concern is what happens? If you have to, that's why the reservation for the waivers exists amongst the board members.
And, and I understand, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Your concern, well, let me just wait for anyone else.
Joe, you can continue.
All right. Can I just, yeah, if he's okay with us voting on this and not voting on the waivers. Then I don't know if we really need any more discussion.
I don't think, honestly, I don't think we do, yeah.
I mean, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, you're okay with the explanation?
Yeah, you know, it goes in the attachment.
Yeah.
We didn't vote on it.
Yeah.
It will be addressed when.
Can I ask a technical question, if it's attached to. This decision becomes part of the decision.
It won't be attached.
It, it's not attached to this, it's not part of the.
It's attached to the file.
It's, it's, it's in the file.
It'll be in the.
It's not part of the decision, it doesn't go with the decision, it's part of what was submitted as part of the application.
Because what I, what I suspect.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
What I suspect we'll do is someone will make the motion to approve the document that as the date it was drafted.
That.
So that, that puts that, you know, in, in the file.
Yeah, as long as.
You follow me?
I, I hear what you're saying.
Anyone else have any other comments? Right?
Nope.
Do we have to formally state that this is being filed away?
I don't believe we do.
It is already submitted as part of the record, so.
So it is in the record. I would, I would entertain a motion. For the defendant subdivision plan. For three oh six Maple Street, dated January ninth, twenty twenty five. So, is there two, or is, I have two copies, is there, are there two different?
There's, should be one for.
More than one.
Six and then is there one for?
Oh, so two separate ones. Yes.
Well, hold, hold on, what do you?
Oh, I'm gonna have, there are. The time, I didn't read the headline.
So it's one motion.
Well, they haven't had a copy of the latest, so.
Yeah.
You can give them a copy.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
So, does someone want to make that motion?
Go ahead.
I have a second.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Nick, I.
Brian, I.
Bill, I.
Bill, I.
Steve, I.
That motion passes unanimously. Thank you for working with us, sir.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Before I see you again.
Thanks, Mike.
Good evening, I'll stay warm.
The next evening, I'll give us the extended. Can you bring us up to speed, um, on the WS, um. Defendant plan that you drafted for us?
Sure, so WS is essentially in the same situation, um. Definitive subdivision for zone freeze was continued, um, a decision was drafted, I think. I don't think the board really had much time to review that decision, it's very similar to the, uh, three oh six. Uh. Maple Street decision, a little bit different in some ways, just because of the different, uh, submissions, but. Overall, same, uh, same logic that, um, you know, items that really couldn't be determined here would be a part of the conditional. Uh, development plan approval, which is in the decision, so with that. That's the update.
I don't have anything, I sat in the opposite chair just in case it wasn't just Mike's voice, but.
Okay.
So.
Uh, but no, I, we're, we're, we're okay with, uh, particularly, uh. Item B two, which is, which addresses. The language works for us, which I think was a clutch of the commentation behind the point, so.
Yeah.
So in, in, in essence, as we've discussed, this is a procedural process.
Correct.
I'll start on my right, Steve, any questions?
I don't.
No questions from me?
I have no questions.
No question.
No questions.
I would entertain a motion for approval of the defendant subdivision for Hartford Avenue dated January ninth, twenty twenty five.
So.
I have a second.
Second, Nick.
Yeah, I'll start on my left, uh, call for the vote.
Nick, I.
Brian, I.
Bill, I.
Bill, I.
Steve, I.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You already had that last reading.
Didn't make me sit at the table for her.
No, that was the intent.
I'll call you. Sounds good, Jeff. Oh, yeah, should have voted to close the public hearing for both of those two, thanks, Jeff.
Second.
You want to.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we take the vote to.
I like to formally do.
Hearing.
Disclose the public hearing for the defendant subdivision on three oh six Maple Street, got a motion for that?
Go ahead. Second, Nick.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Steve, I.
Bill, I.
Bill, I.
Brian, I.
Nick, I.
That motion passes unanimously. Would also like to close the public hearing for the defendant subdivision for, um. WS Bellingham Associates LLC, Hartford Avenue.
So. Second, Nick.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Nick, I.
Brian, I.
Bill, I.
Bill, I.
Steve, I.
That motion passes unanimously, thank you. Appreciate it.
Can you tell everyone?
And sorry, I suspect you might have had a long night.
Yeah.
Can you bring us up to speed on the next item? The public hearing you honor, reading the public notice, Forrest.
Oh, yeah, so let me, I'll read the public notice for one twenty three Mendon Street.
Gentlemen, if you want to come up.
So in accordance with the Town of Bellingham zoning bylaws, section two forty dash sixteen, development plan approval and section two forty dash fifty four. Stormwater management, the planning board will hold the public hearing on Thursday, January ninth, twenty twenty five. At seven PM in the ARCAM meeting room in the municipal center, the applicant and owner DNC Plone Enterprise LLC proposes an approximately six thousand four hundred eighty square foot. Two-story office building with associated parking and utilities located at one twenty three Mendon Street. Approximately one point six nine plus or minus acres of land shown on Assessors Map forty three dash eighteen Zone Business One and Industrial. The plans were prepared by Land Planning Inc., one sixty seven Hartford Avenue, Bellingham, Mass. O two O one nine. The applications and plans may be viewed in the framing and zoning office or town clerk's office in the municipal, municipal center. Penn Mechanic Street in Bellingham, Mass. During regular municipal center business hours, for questions, please contact the town planner at five oh eight six five seven two eight nine three.
Gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Good evening.
What?
Please open the public hearing.
Thank you. I entertain a motion, open the public hearing, we've had so many continuations.
We're on a roll tonight.
Um, so.
Second, Phil, second, Phil.
Motions on the floor, open the public hearing, has been set, any discussion? All in favor?
Yeah, cut.
Brian, I.
Bill, I.
Bill, I.
He don't.
That motion passes unanimously, thank you. Gentlemen, floor now.
Thank you, Bill. Um, Bill Helsing, Land Planning. Uh, project Andy, they are works with us, Pete Belzot. And the opponent, Mark Goff, phone. Uh, project is one twenty three Mendon Street. This has been an interesting site for many years, as you folks may know, as he used Kyle a lot for a number of years. And before that, as long as I can remember back, it was a junkyard. Obviously, it wrecked cars all the way over to the levels. Uh, here's what the project sits on, Mendon Street. Currently, this large gravel area, paved area up front, couple of buildings ripped down a few years ago. Site has wetlands on the left, wetlands on the right with a river. I've also met with conservation last month to give them an overview of the project. Sorry, one second. Well, Brian, tonight, I'm, Brian. Uh, project is to play a professional office building on the property as a redevelopment. Um, probably coming in similar to what the paved area is now, school parking. Underfront infiltration area. And we did meet with the fire department a quarter of a month ago too, and they had requested some turning areas of the site for access around building. Now Steve will give us some info on the, uh, drainage and such.
Okay. Um, so as Bill mentioned, um, we're doing subsurface infiltration, um, the, um, utility easement that cross the limited property. Kind of restricted the surface availability for surface, uh, treatment and infiltration. So the volume was located as shown in orange on sheet C three. Um, the flow is directed in two means, the roof is directed to the system by just your conventional gutter and, uh, pipe. The parking lot is pre-treated with a Vortec pretreatment system for TSS. Where it is then discharged to the isolator row for that subsurface system. Uh, the pretreatment was necessary because of the soils determined on site. Um, they were rapidly infiltrating in most cases being less than two minutes an inch. Um. Are there any questions, uh, the site, I should say, is also gonna be serviced by a, a private septic system and connected to town water. If you have any questions, if you have to answer. If you have anything.
Um. I have nothing really to add at this point, I kind of, as, um, Bill mentioned. Avenue was courteous enough to meet with myself and Hannah, the, uh, conservation agent beforehand, and we had a little bit of that before, then. Really, the biggest thing was the, the fire truck access and Chief Miller, uh, weighed in and, um. You can see on here that there were some sweatpath analyses that were done, which. Uh, appears to satisfy the, the fire chief, so that was just, you know, one thing that I wanted to add, because I know that's always an item that comes up during our meetings, so thank you for, for working with, uh, the fire chief on that. Um. Overall, you know, I, I would say whatever the questions or comments the board may have, that's. Be good, um, and we'd recommend that we just send this out to, for a stormwater peer review and, uh, go over there.
Anyone have any questions?
This one, can you tell me a little bit about the use, the intended user?
Uh, be a professional office building?
Yep. Okay.
Pretty low end.
How many offices are you, is it, it's gonna be a single use or multiple?
It may be multiple tenants in the building, it'll be a two floor of the. It may be multiple tenants in the building, it would be a two floor of building. I think Mark in his business is going to occupy one floor of it and probably rent out some space.
Easement, you're not changing anything at all on your surface at all on easement? Most of the gas pipes, I imagine?
Yes.
Do you have to? Do you have to get approval from Algonquin to do anything here? Is that something you need approval on?
Well, we don't, as we're not modifying it.
Yeah, so we we stop all grading and um impacts short of the uh easement itself. Uh, so we were able to keep any random disturbance and structures outside of the easement area.
So it's not been touched.
Okay, correct.
I I have two questions. On a C one. I know it's in the middle of the property. There's a dividing line. Between business and industrial. Probably does that change anything at all?
Uh, for this use. No, this is. My, I believe the entire use is in the business. District, and it's allowed, I believe it's allowed in both. Yeah, that that shouldn't be an issue. A majority of the development is in the B one zone, so you're. Good there, I think there might be a little bit of parking.
And have you had a chance to meet with any neighbors or? Don't you have neighbors?
We have not.
I'm sorry?
We have not.
You know, uh, do we know who they are?
Yeah, we got the certified butter sauce and sent out notifications to all the neighbors to pull the public hearing.
Okay.
There's not a lot of the butters out here.
That's what I suspected.
Yeah.
Okay.
How close do you just to make the? Is there any? Is there any um? What the closest home that's nearby residential, and it's not even close to?
If it's a house way in the back, there's a driveway next to this on the left.
How far, how far away?
It's way out by Box Pond, I think.
Quarter mile, half mile?
Let's go with the quarter.
Quarter.
I'll never walk back there, but it's it's a good distance.
I believe on the uh locus sheet on the cover, um, we showed G I S locations of structures, I believe the closest ones. Are going to be to the left there. That uh radius going around the property is three hundred feet. Um, so I'm not sure exactly.
Families up the street a little bit.
Triangular piece of the left or west is going to be.
We have very few opening public meetings that we don't have anybody here. We got the cards back, I'm assuming.
Uh, I could not get.
You've got them, yeah.
And I think we may have scanned in the Sunday.
Okay, well, I can understand why they wouldn't. I mean.
I know it's up there.
But it is unusual, so that's why I ask. I think that's where you're going.
Better than a junkyard, right?
I, yes, amen.
Oh, yeah.
Um, one last question. And I'll thank. Person to my left mentioning the junkyard. Do we know how clean this property is?
We do.
Yeah, we had a phase one, died a phase one completed on it.
Okay. You feel very comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Especially we did, we did the test.
Okay.
Probably did quite a few.
Eight test pits on on the site.
Okay.
So we got quite a bit.
Mark was very particular enough to close the property until he knew it was clean.
Okay, I I suspect. It was the case, I didn't want to make any assumptions.
Great question.
Uh, any idea on ours?
Typical business hours?
Okay.
I think we put something in an hour to.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Rob, what what's the best next step to do?
Before, just to answer your question, that house in the back is fifteen hundred feet away, if you can look on.
Okay.
Approximately, that's mass map, or that's the property. That's that house in the back. The driveway ends.
And would they notify?
They were within the three hundred foot radius.
Okay.
Yeah. So next steps, I would just recommend that. Um, this goes out to peer review, um, so I would just, I would recommend continuing to. What's right now? January ninth. So.
Peer reviews are taking time now.
Yeah, they're coming back a little bit quicker now, um. I would anticipate that. We would get something back before the end of the month. Um. So I would recommend. Either the first or maybe the second. Uh, meeting in February, because if you do the second meeting in February, you'll have time to receive and. A little bit of extra time to revise if you're interested in doing that, and.
That makes sense.
You're going to be here anyway for another public hearing, so.
We have a butters.
Yes, you do, so um.
Is there a lot of conservation work that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we know with conservation, they didn't have any concerns at the outset, but certainly they're going to look at the peer review, too.
So they're going to the peer review also.
Yeah.
Same peer review we were, we were hoping, makes sense.
Prefer, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you forget a poll on that yet?
I did not, so um. With that. Um, what was I going to say? The the conservation, they already presented to conservation, so this is our first meeting with planning, but they presented, what, two weeks ago, the conservation?
Yeah, at least.
Yeah, so. That that ball is rolling, um. Anyway. Yeah, so you think in second meeting in February?
Yeah, I think that gives you a little bit of wiggle room.
Yeah.
If you need it.
Yeah.
If something gets slowed down.
Yeah.
Absolutely correct.
So. So we'll just need an extension on the decision deadline, too, maybe we can do, want to just do end of March? That work?
That, that'll make sense.
Alright.
Is that February twenty-sixth?
That'll be the, I think, the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
Uh, do we need one or two motions?
You can do one, because you don't usually. Usually vote on the extension, so I just get it signed.
I would entertain a motion to continue this. To the second meeting in February. Which will be Thursday night, February twenty-seventh. Second?
Second, Phil.
The motion on the floor, um, has been seconded. Any discussion? Call for the vote?
Yeah, got.
Brian, I.
Bill, I.
Bill, I.
That motion passes unanimously. Joe, thank you very much.
Thanks.
We'll see you in a little over two months.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Dan, perfect timing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right?
Where do you want to go next?
Let's go with, since our consultant isn't here yet, I told him to be here around eight, uh, but this, these are going to take longer, this is good. We're moving good, um.
We're going to go close public meetings here.
Yeah. Why don't we go? So why don't we go with uh under general business, uh, four fifty-five Hartford Avenue? Um.
Can you bring us up the speed on this? We've had this before, it's several times.
Yeah, so let me pull up the uh, the concept here, so. As the board most likely remembers, uh, this project, it's been around or was around for a long time, um. This property, there were two submittals that were. In front of the board, uh, both withdrawn, um, you know, there was. I think some. A a little bit of, I don't want to say contention, but disagreements on the limit of what the. The property could can really withstand for development. So, um, Dan American, who's the new engineer on the project, uh, approached the office and. Wanted to discuss some potential development opportunities with the owner, and what I recommended was. Because there was so much history behind this, and a lot of times the development would come in front of the planning board with an application. And then we would spend an hour at the first meeting trying to figure out. You know, give some feedback on what issues you see with the development, so. I recommended to Dan that he come in with a concept, just for a preliminary discussion with the board to see what you guys thought. If you had any questions or comments, um. Really, just on a preliminary basis, there's no vote that's taken, it's just a preliminary discussion. Um.
And not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing.
Just to be clear.
You're not voting on anything, it's.
Just a discussion.
Just a preliminary discussion, so I'm going to pull.
It's not a preliminary plan, it's a preliminary discussion.
Correct, yep, it's just under general business, because, yeah, it's, it is not, it is not a preliminary plan, you do not have to vote on anything, it's just. Just a discussion, so.
Clarify.
You're welcome.
Back and forth.
Yeah. Anyway, Dan, if you want to take it away.
Alright.
Dan.
Good evening, um.
I think you have some shoes to fill there.
I guess so, um, the, I had the prior plan, it was fourteen thousand odd square feet of building for, I guess, auto repair. And that wasn't something the board was very keen about, so. We've put together a concept of a building half the size, seventy-three hundred and twenty square feet, um, and it's envisioned just to be. A multi-tenant building with parking in front. Um, and pedestrian entrances in front, and at the back of the buildings would be garage doors. And it's envisioned just to be a a place where, you know, a small uh retail service company. Could home base and have an office in a little place to store some some materials they might use in their business, it would be a very kind of quiet. Business use in this business. Service companies, correct. Um, so it's a lot smaller, I think you could see from the plan. We have it tucked back a little bit, just because we have wetlands in the front right-hand corner of the property, and it kind of fits better back there, so that'll. Create a nice setback from the street, we have a a good amount of room to provide some buffering to our neighbors to the north. And before we launched into any kind of, you know, detailed design effort, we wanted to bounce it off the board and see what you thought.
Once you start, so we had this a couple of times in front of us, as we said. Um, I think we had neighbors not only to the north, but to the south that came in concerned about springing. So I'll mention that. We had.
And as well as behind.
As well as behind and. Yeah.
The rivers be.
Well, they they were on the other side.
The other side of the river.
Yeah, they they were here.
Okay.
At least, um, I don't know whether it was the first one or the second one, but. It was, it was supposed to be on both of them, that it was. Help with discussion.
Sure.
So they they'll be here eventually.
Good to know.
Good to know, um, you also, if I remember correctly, and from my memory, you guys fill it, fill in your memories, Steve, like. I remember a lot of water, and there was water issues with the neighbors. Thing that the water was flowing all over the place, so eventually there'll need to be a lot of that. Um, there was burns and stuff on one of the plants. See the north, on the north side of things at one point.
Over here.
Yeah. Um, but yeah, I remember the wetlands and. Front and I I do like a smaller location, and looks like you get burning. Burning all the way around.
Yeah, we have designed it so a fire truck could go all the way around.
Your head will be a mountain.
Huge.
Yep. And I think to your point, Phil, one of the big ones was, it was these two properties here.
Yeah.
Building was pushed very close, the previous building, the L shape, was closer, pushed very close to that property line, and it required a retaining wall that was. Very, very close to the property line.
They were talking about panel planting and all those.
Yeah. So.
I would envision we propose some tree plantings and along that side.
I do recall. I believe it was a restaurant. On the north side. He said he looked at the part at one point to buy. He was concerned with water. What you may want to do, and I don't have the dates, I can't remember that that far. You may want to pull up the minutes. When uh this was presented from the board.
Yep.
I can get, you can get a flavor. On what the neighbors were looking for.
Sure.
Prior to meeting with them. And it may not be a bad idea at some point. To uh sit down and meet with them.
Okay.
When when you feel it's appropriate. But I think this is a uh. Huge improvement. Um. I mean, if this had come in front of us years ago. It would have been a lot easier.
Yeah, the the limits of the development are a lot.
Bear in mind, you may get some pushback from some of the neighbors. On what happened before you. Before you took over the property with the tree cover.
Yes, I'm aware.
So just, you know, be prepared for that.
Yes.
Uh, again, as I said, look at the previous match. Uh, and some of those um. Meetings may be online. Um. Liz, you have any comments you want to make? I think you were on here the first time it came through.
This is the one that was going to be like a nine bay.
Yeah.
Yeah, car.
Hell shape.
Oh, yeah.
With trash, trash, trash receptacles outside.
Yeah, that was going to be my comment, if I was remembering it correctly, everyone. Kind of in that area complained a lot about the noise with. Waste removal from seven eleven and all that up up that way, so. I think, um. You know, um, containing the noise, containing the. All of that stuff, I think, is something that the butters would probably bring back up again.
Mm-hmm. And I believe the dumpsters are located very close to that property line.
And there was one dumpster for each business, I think it was like.
That we put the dumpster on the, on the south side.
Yeah, over here.
The only thing on the south side is Rosewood Restaurant, we have homes to the north on Pearl Street. Have some homes across the street, I guess, across Hartford Avenue. But we'd obviously try to. Position those things away from the residential neighbors.
Nick, do you have any comments?
Um, just a couple of things, I do. Recall the neighbors to the northeast. Certainly did not like the fence and the walls, so plantings would be an improvement, and then the neighbors that are. Up this way, if I recall. I think they said in the winter months, they can see straight through. Um. I don't know if that's true, I don't know if it's worth looking at now, to see. But it it might be a stretch, but I think that was what they were claiming.
Alright.
I'll take a look.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just looking at the aerial map and.
It's far.
It's a long way, it's the nearest residential home on the other side of the river.
I'm just thinking back to the meeting, it could have been a year ago, but I I think somebody said that.
Yeah, you're right.
Mm-hmm.
And I'll get to that in a second.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Right?
Um. What would be? Where it says one hundred wetland buffer next to one twenty-six? The potential septic seal location?
Yeah.
What would be in that general area? Would it just be?
Just landscaping.
Okay.
You know, I'll have to put a septic, this is the old, the original testing that was done, I don't know if I'm going to go out and try to do more testing in different locations, but. We already used, that was. Those were the two test souls they had originally intended for the septic system, so. Um. We may play around with that kind of stuff, but the whole, everything. Forward. Of that front little parking area would just be landscaping.
It's landscaping, okay. Yeah, I would, uh. You know, any opportunities that you can find? To move this away from the residential neighbors, if possible. Um, you know, the, I don't know what the. The reason Rob could speak to this, I think. Why they have to build, it was a retaining wall, and it was going to be right on the property line. Um. So the in. If, do you anticipate anything like that?
Well, it's high ground one on the property, right, so the 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 building pad will have to be built up. Probably three or four feet, so if you're trying to. Keep your proposed improvements close to the property line, that's when you end up building retaining walls, so as long as we leave, leave enough room for slope, a planted slope. Then that, then you don't need the retaining.
Alright.
And my thought on. The best way to deal with the neighbors to the north is to have the end of the building. Face them, because there's no, I can say that at the end of the building, right, the front of the building has parking and all the pedestrian entrances, and the back of the building is kind of the back of the house, where you'd have it over a door. You wouldn't want to face, I I wouldn't think you'd want to face either of those towards the neighbors to the north, so we try to just keep the the end of the building where nothing's going on. People are kind of just driving along the side there, and if we have evergreen trees planted along the side there, that's a four-season screen, so that. It works out pretty good. People are kind of just driving along the side there, and if we have evergreen trees planted along the side there, that's a four-season screen, so that, that works out pretty good.
Yeah, uh, whatever you can do to provide, and this is much more buffer than the previous iteration, but if. If there's an opportunity for more of a buffer, for as many trees and screening as you can, do any opportunities you have to. Minimize sound, all of that stuff, um, I know will be greatly appreciated in this process.
I have some more comments, uh, was it one tenant type of situation?
It'll be configured for up to four, but it certainly could be one tenant.
So you're still talking about multiple entities, multiple businesses, multiple.
Possibly.
Entities today.
You configure a building like this so that it could be four smaller businesses, or it could be two. Two businesses, or it could just be one business that wants to come in and take the whole building, you know, you never, you're trying to build, when you're building, building on spec like this, try to build it with flexibility. So that you can accommodate potential tenants.
And what type of vehicles would be capable of, we're talking parking inside?
Yeah, we're talking like vans and things. Yeah, everything's, everything's inside the building, there's no outside storage.
So overnight park?
But, I mean, if they had, if a company owned a van, they might park it there overnight, but, but it's not like. There's nothing gonna be outside except cars.
Like plumbers and things, or?
It could be a plumber, it could be someone, maybe somebody who maintains security equipment or something, you know, there's a lot of different companies that provide services to. Residential properties.
No tractor trailers.
No.
Available dropping off here and.
No, this is too small for that kind of thing.
So the type of services would be going out to provide those services, not coming in?
Correct.
Yep.
So then there will be not, be working any vehicles inside the building?
I don't, they might, like, if they have a van, they might park it in the building overnight.
Okay. One thing, couple things I do remember from the very first meeting, and you should be aware of this. These neighbors haven't seen any construction in that area in a very, very long time. I mean, I think the last time, and I could be wrong with fifty years, but the last time something was built there. Might have been, um, what they call, the new Cumberland Farms gas station.
Yeah, it's just on the other side.
Just on the other side. Um. So, bear, bear that in mind, that they had not seen a lot of construction. They also were very concerned about the fence on the property line. Being raised above the ground, so quote-unquote critters, we go under, underneath the, the. We're not gonna fence back there, correct?
I mean, if, if some neighbors might want a fence, if, if a neighbor wanted a fence, I don't think we'd be opposed to it, but if they don't want a fence, and they just want the vegetated screen.
Sure.
And they used to wildlife happening there.
Okay.
All right, and I suspect you'll probably hear that.
Fleet trucks, we're not talking fleet, I mean, parking the fleet trucks.
Like I said, a small business might have one or two vehicles.
Yeah.
Not like dozens of.
Not ten, not twenty.
Not ten or twenty.
That would be a concern the board, this board member would have later.
Yeah, these are small spaces that.
Yeah.
Would accommodate really only small businesses.
Okay, that's, we're having an open discussion, and that'd be a concern. Years later.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I assume you'll try to make this look like similar buildings that are there.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the objective with the pedestrian entrances in the front, parking in the front is the, you know, the front facade will be. Uh, nicer than, obviously, we don't wanna put garage doors on the front.
Okay. They'll be in the back.
They'll be in the back.
Okay.
I thought, so I think. Hopefully, give you a little feedback.
No, that was great, I appreciate it.
Again, just go back and look at the various minutes.
Yeah.
And again, they could be on video somewhere.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your.
Thank you, Dan.
Appreciate it. Rob, you wanna talk about the housing production plan approval?
Yes, our consultant is here, the man, the myth, the legend, you know, Carl Ugi.
Wow, I'm amazed that I got here at a good time.
We were, we're moving quick, Gino, it's been a good night, so. Um, yeah, so, so Gino actually has been helping Bellingham, is running a soul for this. Housing production plan that needs to be, um, needs to be updated every five years, I believe. So, we're, we're due for hours to be updated, um, you know, it's. Covers a lot of statistics and really areas in town that we could. Improve our housing production, don't have to do it, but it's just areas that we can focus on. Um, interesting enough, the areas of. Not really a concern, but the areas of which then we can most likely produce more housing, all right?
Sure, thank you very much for coming.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you for your input.
Um, you know, there are areas that, the majority of the areas are actually already being looked at and have been utilized by developers, including. Uh, you know, the Red Mill on the Charles Development, uh, New England Country Club currently has an ANRAT in front of. The Conservation Commission, they came in with a preliminary subdivision plan, that was another overlay that, um, is mentioned. Um, and then there's also been some sites that this board is very familiar with, I know, um. Bungay Brook, when the townhouse development project came in, um, there was discussions about off-site. Uh, affordable housing for the Center Street parcel, which is listed in here as well, so, you know. Lot of familiar items in this, this plan, and I think, Gino, you've done a phenomenal job pulling it together, appreciate your efforts, I know it hasn't been easy. So, um, with that, I don't know, Gino, if you wanted to give just a brief overview and.
Yeah, yeah, it can be brief, and then I can respond to questions.
Okay.
Um, so in essence, this, uh, uh. A significant part of the work was updating statistics that were in the previous nineteen, twenty nineteen plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, uh, and then the goals, and there's a, there's, there were goals and there are implementation strategies provided. The goals are essentially the same, and they're derived from the twenty-twenty master plan and the previous housing production plan. Um, there's one, there's one, well, I, I, I'll just briefly go through the goals without reading the whole thing, but, uh. It's, one is to manage growth appropriately, which kind of makes sense, continue to offer, uh, a cohesive sense of place. Uh, in the, in the three villages and the suburban and rural areas, protect national cultural resources. Promote healthy lifestyles through walking and vice versa, and provide diverse housing. Stocks, those, those were the existing goals, and we added one in con, in consultation with Rob to, um. Promote redevelopment of outdated properties to enhance, uh, livability in here. Um, then, uh, another factor is the, um, forty B status. Which, you know, one, one of the, one of the purposes of a housing production plan, or one of the benefits, which in, in a way is not really applicable. To you right now, because you're above ten percent, but, um, so, o- one of the, one of the, um. Requirements is to come up with goals on how to get to ten percent. But right now, based on the twenty-twenty census, there were six thousand seven hundred thirty-two housing units. In Bellingham, so ten percent of that is six hundred and seventy-three, and you have already seven hundred and fifty-nine. Uh, according to Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. So, the number of units needed to maintain ten percent through twenty-thirty is zero. They're already there, um, and, and by the way, that six thousand seven hundred thirty-two. That's the denominator that the ten percent is measured against for the entire period, even if. No matter how many new housing units get built this year, next year, they don't go on the denominator for measuring the ten percent, it stays that number.
Okay.
Uh.
That seems to be advantageous for us.
Yes, exactly, and, and, uh, so the next time that gets updated will be based on the twenty-thirty census. Which those, those confirmed figures don't come out until at least twenty thirty-two. I think this year it was twenty twenty-three, before the twenty twenty numbers were finalized.
I'm just, just lucky around, there could be a entirely different board in a twenty thirty.
Probably not.
Hearing from the attorney.
And, and just to. Just to kind of confirm that, uh, if the number of housing units on an annual basis that. Were produced between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty-three, the average was sixty-eight units per year, if you project that out to twenty-thirty. You come up with seven thousand two hundred eight total, which. Ten percent of that is seven twenty-one, which is still under the seven fifty-nine that you already have. And it's, and some of those new units obviously would likely be affordable as well, so you, you easily can stay above ten percent.
Was the, um, accessory housing, the new housing.
Yeah, accessory dwelling units?
Yeah, accessory dwelling, does that play into those numbers at all?
No.
Like, for example, you're gonna have so many inclusionary housing, I wouldn't suspect that the. New dwelling on, on the same property would be, is, does that count towards either of those numbers? Numerator at all?
That's a very good question, and, and, uh. I knew the answer, but I'm trying to think of it, but.
Cause do they count as, I mean, you get housed, you get so many housing.
Right, right.
Does it count towards the numerator if, if everybody adds a secondary location to their?
I don't think it does, but I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I can't say with certainty.
It is a good question, because, I mean, you'll get like a family apartment, it wouldn't be considered, you know, but.
Putting a shed on, a larger shed on the back that, you know, Ron called it said, but the secondary off connected, I don't know.
Yeah, I, that, it's an interesting.
I found it very interesting, so it's, so it comes.
Very.
Okay, so then, um. The next section is the, is housing strategies, which also are pretty much the same as they were, uh, in twenty nineteen. So that, that was in, there's only three, three major categories, and then they each have some, subtasks, uh, below them. But the, the major ones are enhance local capacity, the plan advocate for, develop and manage affordable housing units. And probably one of the, uh, more significant parts of that, under that, was. To secure funding for affordable housing, and, and I understand that you're considering, uh, the Community Preservation Act. Uh, sometime next, this year, I keep saying next year, but now it's this year. Um, so I did do a calculation, there had been a calculation done in the previous plan as well, but. Uh, you, you familiar with the community? Okay, it's an opportunity to add, and this could be controversial, but add a surcharge to the property tax. Up to three percent is the maximum. Um, many towns don't do the full three percent, but anyway.
Fun can be used for additional housing?
But, you can use the, the, the money has to be used for one of four things. Or a, any of four things, affordable housing, open space, uh, preservation, historic preservation, and recreation.
Okay.
And ten percent, at least ten percent has to be used for, for three of those things, three, each of those things. Uh, other than recreation, it can be used for recreation, but there's not a minimum on that. So, um, if, ju- just to get a ballpark figure, if, if the town adopted that at one and a half percent. So half the maximum, it would generate, um, it, it would, it would. It would cost homeowners, it would add fifty-nine dollars a year to the average tax bill. And it would generate, uh, I think it came up with two hundred and fifty-eight, or two hundred and something thousand a year. In CPA funds, and then there's a state match to that, and the state match is like roughly thirty percent, so. Uh, the total came out to like three hundred and fifty-something thousand a year would be, and it wouldn't all be needed for housing, okay, for housing, but. That's one of the eligible tasks. So, um, the next strategy was identify sites for creation of affordable housing through new developments, redevelopment or preservation. And then, and that's where some of the properties that Rob had mentioned are listed in that section. And preserving existing affordable units are one of the subtasks of that as well. And third strategy was update zoning to create opportunities for development of affordable housing and to encourage diversity in housing. Auctions, uh, and you already, uh, uh, working towards that in part because you require to. By adopting the accessory dwelling unit bylaw and adopting an MBTA communities bylaw, so you've already kind of made progress in that. So, the, that's the very brief.
Okay.
Portion of this, uh, if you'd like, I can go through some, uh, just what I think of some highlights on, on some of the demographic.
Sure.
Okay, so, um, the population projections for Bellingham are showing, uh, well, well, the two that I looked at. From MAPC and the other from the Donahue Institute, MAPC is showing pretty much stable population through, uh, twenty fifty. While Donahue Institute shows a bit of a decline in twenty fifty. Which seems to be counterintuitive to be increasing housing production, but.
Do we know what the factor was that was making the change in the two assumptions, like, there's two assumptions that.
Yeah, yeah.
One's down and one's, do we know what these?
I, I, I don't know.
Give it the Asian's population.
They just have different model inputs, probably.
Yeah, what's the different model?
They won't tell you, it's proprietary.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and as you alluded to, the, the, uh.
Like I said, I found it interesting.
Senior population is looking at a big increase, twenty, like twenty-five percent increase. Uh, by twenty thirty, so that, not, not twenty fifty, by twenty thirty. Um, school-aged children has continued to decline, and that's projected to continue.
And that's pretty consistent with the school apartments still.
Yes, and that's, that's all over, that's not just. Um, percentage of households living alone, I thought, that's, that's twenty-three percent, that's now, that's twenty-three percent, which I thought was. Seen, seen high, it was significant to, to note, it kind of, it kind of indicates a need for smaller housing for that, for that. Segment of the population. Uh, Bellingham's median household income, one hundred and sixteen thousand, is, uh. Roughly equal to the stat for Norfolk County as a whole, but way above the state. And it's, uh, it's number six, Bellingham's number six out of the, the ten neighboring communities. Or the nine neighboring communities, ten including. Uh, housing costs, Bellingham is relatively affordable compared with Norfolk County and the Boston region. Um. Let's see. Uh, just a kind of a snapshot of the range of, of housing availability for sale in September twenty twenty-four, and I just pulled this on Zillow. But, uh, there was a two-bedroom ranch advertised for three hundred and sixty-nine thousand. And a four-bedroom colonial at one, one point two-five million, so huge, huge range, which is, which is good to have that range. The work, economic profile. The, um. Yeah, so this, this is the, well. I think it's probably obvious, but retail trade is the largest employment sector in Bellingham, followed by transportation and warehousing. Um.
Answer up to on that point?
Yes.
Based on, how current is that statistic?
That's, that's very current, um. It's, uh, I think that's like twenty twenty-three, if not twenty twenty-four, that's. Cause that's from the state, state database, which is very up to date, you know, it, it's updated monthly.
What I thought was interesting about. What I thought was interesting about that was that we you basically took that and then those that work here. A lot of them can't afford to live here.
Exactly.
That was the conclusion I got out of that whole piece that you did, that was very eye opening.
Right, um. Yeah, forty, what is this, forty three percent? Yeah, forty three percent of the jobs in Bellingham are industries where the average wage is below fifty thousand and ninety percent are below eighty, eighty one thousand. Yeah, I I made this chart. It showed of it. Into economic sectors and what their wages were compared to the income needed to rent a median priced apartment. The income needed to purchase a median priced condominium and the income needed to purchase a median priced single family home. Which the median price was uh five hundred eighteen thousand and the income needed for that was one twenty. And if you look at the chart, the green line is that the income needed, only one bar exceeds that, exceeds that. And that's, that sector is utilities, which is way above the others, but there's only like ninety employees in that sector. Uh the next one, wholesale trade, uh kind of touches it and there's a lot more employees there.
Was that fair to say that that the people that work here, there's not a lot of opportunities to live here?
That's very fair to say.
When I read that, it sounded like that was one of the conclusions that I got from.
Yeah, absolutely. It's absolutely right. Uh, yeah, I heard more.
The other way to look at it is people that have higher incomes work elsewhere.
Yeah, so more than half of Bellingham renters and a quarter of homeowners are are paying more for housing than what's considered affordable. And what's considered affordable is thirty percent of your income. And so um. Thirty percent, thirty percent of renters are paying more than half their income, just on the rent.
Because rents are so expensive.
Yeah, exactly. And uh, yeah, to to your conclusion, uh one point seven percent of Belling's housing stock is affordable. The households earning less than seventy five thousand. The uh and what's considered affordable in determining the uh either the rent or the purchase price or an affordable unit. Uh is is based on the uh eighty percent of the median household income of the Boston metropolitan region. So. So that 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 figure, the the median for the Boston Cambridge Quincy Mass New Hampshire region is a hundred and forty eight thousand. So eighty percent of that. Uh well, it 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 varies by household, by number, number of persons in the family. So uh a family of four that makes a hundred, that has a household income, total household income of a hundred and thirty thousand would qualify for an affordable unit. And uh at eighty percent, if the purchase price is eighty percent of or the if that if that figure can support a rent or purchase price that is only thirty percent of that hundred and thirty thousand. I know it gets a little, a little convoluted, but.
So we'd be better off if they didn't include North of County. I mean, what what's if?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I've always been, we're close to Worcester County.
Yeah.
Then we are, yeah.
Yeah.
But the metro definitions from the census are based on like.
The county?
No, it's where people travel to do and work and do business. So like Bristol County is part of the Providence M S A. Because more people that live in Bristol County are working there or in Providence. So like Southern New Hampshire ends up in our M S A, because a lot of people live there, but commute here to work. And then the Worcester M S A is is different.
Okay.
M S A stands for.
Metropolitan Statistical Area.
Thank you.
So like parts of Connecticut are part of the Worcester M S A.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so it's all about, and that and they've changed over time. The the census will go through and change the definitions if you see economic commerce changing, the patterns change. I I think it's pretty rare that it's changed up here, but other places, I think high population growth areas, it can change pretty frequently.
You know, we're probably one of the furthest towns out west. In metropolitan Boston.
Absolutely right.
So it's a li- a little skewed over the history of the town.
Yes. Yeah, and it is. Uh i- in one sense, it's it's unfair. But and I and I talked to the, I talked to once to um, at the time it was called D H C D about if they could change that and they say, well, we can consider it, but not that, not that.
Walk me through it, so. Make sure I'm clear. So because we're so close to to Bar, or because we're part of that Boston Quincy. The, what was it, one thirty was the one, was that the line that there was, what was the the income level?
The median family income is a hundred and forty eight thousand.
A hundred and eighty thousand in a family, so when we do inclusionary housing here. The inclusionary housing number is up. The affordable piece of that is the house that's worth hundred and forty eight. Well, that's the income that has to get into it. To into a house. How does that plays with? The hundred and forty eight thousand, how many of the ramifications of that?
All right, a hundred and forty eight thousand, that's the median income. Income for the whole region.
Okay.
So eighty percent of that. And I'm sorry. For a family of four. The the income needed, the maximum income to qualify for affordable house is the one thirty.
Is the one thirty, that's the max number.
That's the maximum. And as as I said earlier, the the median income of Bellingham is one sixteen. So if.
So people would qualify to get in to inclusionary.
Yeah, it's better that we're being compared to a higher income area because we have lower incomes, so more people would technically.
Be able to buy.
Yes, they would qualify for the affordable rate.
So but does does the value of the house overall, I know we talk about like amenities and things like that, but the overall value of the house is that a?
Well, that that's it. The the way the affordable house price is determined.
Yeah.
Is you you take that one, one thirty.
Yeah.
And uh well, to simplify it, divide it by twelve to get the monthly income.
Okay.
And you kind of work backwards and then you see what what they can afford on a monthly basis to pay for their mortgage. Um insurance and taxes.
Somewhere around thirty percent?
Yes, it can't exceed thirty percent.
Cannot exceed.
And and that's, and that's how they determine the price of the house. And it varies based on the interest rate too, obviously, because the if the interest rate is lower, they can afford more. But the the the.
So the value of the overall house. I mean. How? How was that determined more? We're giving the, give me the, I mean, I know we're looking for like amenities and things like that, but the value, the the person that makes a hundred and thirty thousand and thirty percent gets you a percentage into a price of a house. But the price of the house. If you're building two hundred million dollar houses, how does that play in?
You wouldn't be able to load it.
You wouldn't be able, the affordable housing piece wouldn't fit into it. And I guess I'm asking a question because I I I'm trying to see.
At that point, there would be no availability of a housing within the range that you could afford, right?
Yeah, so so do we, because the housing values are so high.
But but that's where.
The incomes are low.
That's what forty D comes in or inclusionary zoning comes in.
Yeah, the developer has to take a haircut.
So they would take that haircut to get down to the thirty percent.
Whatever that magic price is.
Yeah, they're taking haircuts right now at Harmony.
Yeah.
And.
So it's not going to be long before Harmony Homes are worth over a million dollars.
I mean, within this year.
Yes. So to Phil's point, those inclusionary homes. How would we answer Phil's question? As Harmony Homes continue to increase in value?
They they have to pick. The owner takes the the haircut.
Because they, yeah.
And they get, you know, they'll sell it. I want to use, I have to take Harmony out, but the two million dollar home, they're gonna have to sell it for one thirty, thirty percent monthly basis, right?
Yes, but only the affordable ones.
Only the ten percent affordable.
Yes.
Yeah, and the other ones go to market.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's why when you see municipalities requiring more percentage of units to be affordable, the math doesn't pencil for developers. So there's this song and dance you have to do to get the math to work. So if you require too many units to be affordable, the market won't bear that out for development. So that's.
It's not worked well.
Right, so that's how it works out.
Do other towns require, like, we're we're at our magic number?
I don't know about suburban towns, but in like in the city of Boston, like the mayor has come up, has you know, increased the percentage of units that have to be affordable.
So they're like a, like they can go to twenty, some towns could go to twenty. As opposed to.
I don't know how it works in terms of the legislation, like it it has to get passed and like all that kind of stuff.
But some towns could require more than a ten percent.
Uh, yeah, I think.
And part of that came to hope to be addressed by the M A P C. That's the the goal.
No.
Well, those are not.
There's a ten percent.
Yeah, I agree. But they want to build more house.
Yeah, well, yeah, supply and demand, you would think more supply. Prices would go down.
Yeah.
Et cetera.
Anything else you want to add?
Uh, I think those are. Yeah, yeah, that's pretty much.
The other thing I thought was interesting with the the two and three bedroom pieces of it. That with the starter homes and things like that, what what was your take on the? If we were trying to promote.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, if we were trying to promote. I want to say more affordable housing, not inclusionary housing, but more affordable housing.
Yeah, naturally affordable.
Affordable for people that actually work here. I mean, the.
Yeah, they don't swallow.
You gotta build smaller homes, but there was, there were some things you mentioned that probably too really bedroom homes and things like that, like that's just kind of interesting.
Yeah, I I thought that was a very interesting thing, thing.
Yeah, I thought that would be one more thing to be worth.
Based on assessors data.
Yeah.
The the I looked at the value of per unit in three family four to eight unit, because that's how the census breaks it down, categories, three families, duplexes and four to eight unit apartments. So the value per unit of three family uh in in four uh for three family were were a hundred and thirty eight thousand per unit. And for a three family and a hundred and twenty seven thousand for four to eight unit building per unit. And then duplexes, one, one ninety seven. So that just seemed like a a good way to go to develop naturally affordable housing. If those units were valued less than a single family home, people could afford to get into those more easily uh and and uh for the developer, the the building costs would be lower as well.
And the targeted communities were, I think were they, you know. Veterans, I think was partly, not maybe not veterans, what was it? The it was the elderly living alone.
Disabled.
Disabled and starter families.
Yes.
So that's what was targeted, that's those areas.
That's I think what people in town want to target. Moving forward.
Interesting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I found it very interesting, thank you.
Any actions?
Yeah, I think Brian has a question, but.
Yeah, let's put a question. Is there anything that we should do or think about? Um then, I know that the denominator is static as of two thousand twenty, but a number of housing units have come online since then. So that number has moved. And then the numerator. There's additional units coming on, but then over time they fall off as well, right? There's a natural shelf life to these affordable units. So if we look at what we are now. And is there something we should be doing to be defensive of maintaining our position above the ten percent threshold? That.
Most, most of the units are um in perpetuity, they're they're required to stay in perpetuity. That's not written in stone though, uh because when they come up for sale to turn over. If a qualified buyer can't be found, then then there's a way for it to become a market free unit again. But so, yeah, there is, there is action that the town could take to try to maintain those from from falling off. And and they did that from with Oakwoods. Which they, those were aspiring and um I I don't know exactly what, where, how they got extended, but they did get extended, so so those did not fall off.
I I recall when you work in Harmony. The assumption was made that they would remain in perpetuity. And that the people that bought it and sold it got a very, you know, unusual percentage of any of these. If anything at all.
Yeah, that's right. They they can, they can get, the people who buy the affordable units, when they sell them. They can get a little bit of equity because the the that eighty percent, thirty percent formula goes into effect again, but now the units are, incomes are high. E- everything has gone up, so they do, they don't get as much as a market rate.
All right.
You know, increase. Um but yeah, that happens.
We have a working number of where we think we are in terms of think for two thousand twenty, add the new numbers, add the new affordable. We know we're somewhere there. Or is that the number that you derived?
I I I did the projection for the denominator, but not, not the numerator. I I I, we have a list of the objects that we know about now. But no, I I all all I did was show that uh even if you develop no more, you would stay above the ten percent, but I I didn't.
Okay.
I didn't try to estimate the what you would have in point thirty.
Yeah, and these um, like the master plan and all of these things, I think are really important, important, raining tools. But the what what we see them the most is when developers come in and hold it over our heads, look what you said here, and this is important.
I know, I know.
It's, you know, it's a double edged sword.
Yes.
Just to add on to that, Brian, to answer your question. So number one, just a couple of things, because one of them's relatively new. We actually have a consultant on board that monitors our S H I and actually helps get the units online too. Liz Ross, she's great. We just started working with her, which is good, because I will be completely honest with you when it comes to the affordable housing components stuff, that is just not my forte. Learning, but that's just new to me. So she's been great. Um the other thing too, a lot of our zoning, like when it comes to our the major residential developments, there is a clause in there for the inclusionary housing and one way to protect that S H I number, like for example, the MBTA zoning. We made sure that we included a ten percent requirement, just because when you have, as you know, a large bug of development, you really want to protect that number as much as you can.
Now, is that like the St. Harbor's number?
Yeah, um. Now, the one thing to note, and I'm happy that we're, we have some cushion here over the ten percent, but something that we do need to be mindful of. We have two developments that are relatively large in size, but don't have the ten percent requirement. One of them is the um Red Mill on the Charles. I mean, I think we have plenty of room in our S H I to absorb that number of housing, but it's just something that we really have to be on top of, which.
Going back here, that wasn't part of that agreement? Really, okay.
I don't believe so.
So so I mean, if someone's proposing a new development, what dictates whether they are required to provide? So so I mean, if someone's proposing a new development, what dictates whether they are required to provide? Um, you know, some affordable housing, ten percent, you know, I mean, what dictates a developer, A, you have to, but developer, B, you don't?
It would be the zoning, so the major residential the subdivision or major residential development is what it's called. All of those require the ten percent. Um, so for example, uh, Bungay Brook was required. Um.
Harmony.
Harmony was required, same with, um, actually North and Blackstone Street, that one was also required. Um, most of them are, it's just, that one was, it has unique zoning. I have no idea why it was a different overlay. Um.
I forget what it was, there was, um.
It was unique.
If I'm not missing.
I don't forget what it was.
Well.
Something, they were doing a lot others.
They were doing the school stuff.
That I think is where it came down to was because there wasn't like any, any limit on, I think, the bedroom count for that development, it was implied that there would most likely be a generation of school age children. So it was more of a focus on schools to get rather than affordable, uh, housing.
And that was the cost perhaps?
Yeah. I digress, but I just wanted to mention that, Brian. So there are, there are things in place. And I think, you know, moving forward is, if there are overlays that end up getting, um, you know, added to to our zoning map, you know, we most likely will be requiring the ten percent just moving forward, but just to protect that number.
The one by, uh,
New England Country Club?
Yes, that one had an affordability component.
No.
It doesn't.
It's not.
Well, that's something that, that could be three hundred units.
I mentioned two developments.
The second one?
Yes, so.
So that's a big deal, right?
And we need to plan for it, so, yeah.
So there would have been, if we said ninety and three hundred, let's call it four hundred.
I have no idea what the density would be for New England.
I think there was, I think that.
It's never, yeah.
Say it's four hundred, ten percent would have been four.
Yeah.
We can afford to lose a little bit of the denominator and all of that stuff.
Yeah, I'm not.
I will deal with that when it comes in front of us.
Well, we we won't, because we won't be able to afford them to be able to dictate that. So it's something at a town level, right, that has to.
Yeah, and I would just say, um, keep, keep your ears open and eyes open to agendas going forward for, because I think there will be some discussions on how we can add to our S H I. I'll just leave it at that. Um, anyway.
Is that a teaser?
Is that a? Yeah, it was. I digress.
Tune in next week.
Yeah. So.
Was there anything like, I saw, I'm just looking at my foot. There you used the word discriminatory. And and I forget where it was.
I did?
No, in the in the document. Um, I apologize, I didn't print it off, but was there anything that was? Um, do me a favor, can you just?
Can you roll F?
Yeah.
Roll F.
I should print, usually I print those things, but I didn't today. It was with the two and three bedroom thing. That I was concerned about. Was there anything in there that would get, you know?
Yeah, it looks like eliminate bedroom restrictions on multifamily housing.
Was the word in it?
Such restrictions on the size of rental housing units is discriminatory and counterproductive to meeting the town's housing needs.
Yeah, so the word discriminatory, I would not want in any document that I would want to. Someone's gonna, I would be afraid to, I mean.
Didn't we approve something that had it in there?
Yeah, I I saw that and I said, oh, oh, um, the the sentiment might be, we might be better off, but could you talk about the sentiment that was involved with that if? The it was the three bedrooms versus the two bedrooms and the could you read that again, Ralph, one last time?
So just that.
You can't, don't use the word, it's just the the sentiment of what's there.
It's, I can, I'll just, I can read this second of that. So eliminate bedroom restrictions on multifamily housing. Bellingham zoning currently restricts multifamily development to smaller unit sizes, allowing no more than ten percent of units to have three or more bedrooms. Such restrictions on the size of rental housing units is and counterproductive to meeting, to meeting the town's housing needs. As the town faces declining school enrollments, there's not a compelling benefit to limiting the development of housing that can accommodate families. Fiscal sustainability is best supported by providing, well, it goes on, but.
Okay, did you want to? The word, the word counterproductive.
I forgot.
Would you be amenable to changing the word counterproductive?
Absolutely.
I appreciate.
So tell me the, tell me the logic of that.
Please. Yeah, can you walk through that in a little bit more detail?
It it it's counterintuitive to the statement that we want to provide a wide array of housing options, right?
Well, let's discriminate.
Oh, I don't know about that, but I mean.
Because I don't think it is.
I know, I think it's intended to keep families from bringing lots of kids into the school system.
That's what makes it discriminatory. It's intended to keep families.
Yeah.
Away.
But isn't that an assumption?
It is, and it's not proven out in the data at all that building apartments brings all these school children.
Correct. And it's proven that so far with the apartments we have.
Yeah, school enrollment barely moved after the Curtis was developed.
Well, I think, I guess I'm asking the question, and it's an open question, um, building a three bedroom or four bedroom apartment or building would support more families as opposed to having
Larger families.
Larger families.
It wouldn't restrict families. However, I don't know that many developers that are clamoring to build four bedroom apartments, like, again, they don't want to build four bedroom apartments financially, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
Yeah, here, no.
So I think restricting it is probably a moot point, because one, it it's not true that building multifamily housing and having unending bedrooms brings all these kids to the school system and two, most market rate developers aren't going to build four bedroom apartments. They just don't make financial sense.
And that's probably like the, you know, Bungay Brook, the smaller units.
Hmm.
Uh, Blackstone was smaller. And working within, you know, our buylaws.
Because we wanted, because the focus for the need, the need, I'll say the word need was starter family home places. Retire, um, older retirees and things like that.
Driven by market.
And driven by market, really driven by market.
That's good.
But that's, that's, yeah.
No, I mean, a better, I think the better word instead of discriminatory unintended consequences, right? It could be this, but to label something.
I I liked his one, which was.
Well, you just counterproductive.
Counterproductive.
Yeah, rough.
Well, just do.
I think we all agreed that we'll change that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Someday someone's gonna whack us with that.
It'll be twenty thirty two.
Yeah, I think it'll be next month.
Yes. So, but to answer your question, Bill, I know you're saying, should you make a motion? So this is, this does get approved, uh, jointly through planning board and select board, so you are the the first ones to to hopefully approve this tonight, and then it'll be on the agenda for the select board.
I would entertain a motion to approve this report. And do I have to forward it on a selection?
Uh, no, because we can do that, and I think it's just with that one revision to to strengthen term discriminatory and just kind of productive.
And would you, uh, bring the reasons forward to the selectmen's side? This was one word, and we didn't think it was a.
Yeah, so they haven't seen, like, they don't have the draft yet, because they get their drop boxes later, so, um.
They may never see.
Yeah, I think as long as, this is the form that you are, are, um,
I see originates from us.
Yep.
Gotcha. We're not approving the same document. It originates from us and then goes to that.
Correct.
Gotcha.
So they may never see that.
Alright, yeah.
And I'll see a cleanup language.
Gotcha.
I think I heard a motion, and I think I'd like to be the second, because I didn't, I'd like second.
I made the motion.
Sure.
Okay.
I thought I heard it, I thought you heard it.
Yeah, you can make.
I'll second.
Do you want to make the motion?
I'll second it. Alright, thank you.
We motion the floor, main and seconded. Are we all allowed to vote in this, the entire board, even the alternate?
Yeah, I don't think the alternate is allowed to. Sorry, Liz.
I'm trying to get you to.
Hey, I had to hear that for years, okay?
Me too.
Mike was the alternate.
She was. Nick.
Hi.
Brian, hi.
Bill, I.
Bill, I.
You like.
Excellent.
I'm motion passing, sir. Thank you for a great reason, Dave.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was very.
It's starting to keep you out so late.
No, I was, I was prepared to be much later, so.
Okay.
This is wonderful.
Good.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Gino.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
We all had a chance to look the minutes through December eleven, we.
It's a typo on our lease sheets here.
That was intended. Wow. I think, Brian, you had one which I ended up should be on this.
You did good.
Yeah, yes. Yeah.
I'll move to.
It's Gera.
Need to change that, that's correct.
I move to approve the minutes and was permitted.
Um, no, I think we need to clarify the amendment on to Cheryl, correct?
Yeah, I think that was.
Okay.
As amended.
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
David, we'll start with you.
Uh, he, I.
Bill.
Bill, I.
Brian, I.
Nick, I.
I motion pass the in number seven. Last thing we have on the agenda, I believe, is Harmony.
Yeah, I'll very quickly just explain what's going on with that. I don't have the information tonight for you to act on it, but just to give you an update on what's going to be happening in the future. So I don't know if everyone's driven through there. I recommend driving through the development. It's coming together quite nicely. Actually, a pretty good portion of the roads and infrastructure is completely one hundred percent done. Um, the other half is under binder course, but they are looking to finish up that subdivision that they were hoping, I think they were slated five years to be at that site, and it's been, what, two? And, uh, they're already almost done. I think they have one last phase left, so what they're eventually going to do, um, I'm working with the D P W now because they did all the inspections, but there's a significant amount of bonding, surety bonding for that site, because there's so much infrastructure and roads. Um, they're at one hundred percent completion, and the way that our bonding works is we can release the bond or reduce it to twenty percent until it gets, um, accepted. And, um, I think it's a year after it's accepted, so there's a little bit of wiggle room. Um, that's when you can fully release the bond. But they are looking to get their bond debt down, because it is quite significant at that site because of the roads. So at some point, um, probably within the next couple of meetings, I will have all the paperwork and from the D P W that basically there'll be a vote or a request to a vote to reduce the bond to that twenty percent for the roads that are complete. So that's the first thing. The second thing is a decision amendment. Um, we're right now working through the details. It's been a bit of a long road, but the decision required, um, construction of sidewalks on Cross Street. I don't know if.
Oh, I remember this.
So unfortunately, after going out on the site and looking at the design, it would have required a significant amount of takings, and there's actually some areas that it would just be impossible to build these sidewalks, because there's driveways that very, um, steep, uh, inclines. There's areas that there's just, like, there's the, um, I forget what Brook that is, but there's resource areas right next to where these, uh, sidewalks would go. It would be a, just a massive task. And it would be a massive task on the town, because a lot of this would have to be taken through eminent domain, and it would just, it's just not gonna work. So with that, the developer has been, uh, discussing with us by us, D P W, myself, and just town staff, ways to add improvements to Cross Street, which aren't the sidewalks, but, you know, comes into the same dollar figure as the sidewalks would be. So we're not quite finished with that decision amendment yet, but I'm expecting there will be a plan in front of you within, like I said, the next couple of meetings. Um, and what, you know, we'll have the supporting documentation with the amount of what the sidewalks would have cost compared to what the new improvements are going to be.
They're just transferring to different projects.
Correct, um.
Now, does this qualify as a major change? So because those neighbors are expecting sidewalks.
Yeah, I I, it would be up to the board, and I can pull up the definition of major, so it's pretty clear what your, you know, what you would be voting on, um.
I just, like, part of, I mean, is that even a public hearing? Letting the neighbors know that, hey, we we want input even. I mean.
We would decide if it's minor or major, if we decide it's minor, no, major, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you wouldn't even make the vote on the amendment, you would just make the decision that it's minor or major at that meeting, and if it's major, then, okay, we're gonna get the the public hearing.
Then we'll start a public hearing after that. It would be the same thing.
Correct.
So you haven't made a determination that it's a major.
Well, it would be you guys, and I will definitely have my suggestions once we have the finalized plan.
I I do love supporting documentation that will guide us down a certain.
Yeah, I'm just gathering the information now. I'm giving you an update. This was a placeholder, because I wanted to make sure that, I don't want you. Yeah, I don't want you guys to just all of a sudden see this, and then we're having the same conversation, is this major or minor, and.
Some of the decisions we put, I think, your position as the deciding. Uh, those double check that, because I think some, or you could do it in a different way.
Yeah, I.
I think, didn't some of our decisions basically say that his position was the arbiter?
Yeah, it's usually like planting, things like that.
Yeah.
And I'd rather do it in a public meeting anyway, so, well, yeah, we'll do that.
Okay. It's it's sort of unfortunate.
That's my way of asking.
It may not be.
Yeah, no, sure thing. Yeah, no, absolutely.
Be realistic at this point to do.
Yeah.
No, I'm fine with that. In your hindsight, it, we could have looked at, but that's been floating around.
Bull.
It's been flowing around.
Full disclosure to the Republicans.
Yeah, that's what we need.
Yeah.
Rob, can I do clarifying questions briefly?
Sure. So the town, even though this is mitigation of this project, the town would have to pay for the takings?
So that's the interesting part, because the decision, as it was drafted, the construction was put on the developer. But the permitting, takings, and I believe it's actually the final design was.
From the town?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, I, when we vote on this, I will have the decision in front of you, so you can see it, and Eastland has been phenomenal to work with, and they were trying very hard to figure out a way to get this to work, but we went out on site and the the hurdles were just unbelievable, especially as you get closer to Silver Lake, because the intent was to put a sidewalk from the entrance across street to the Silver Lake Recreation Area. As you get closer to the recreation area, you be, you get into that wall, which is all resource areas. There's actually a bridge over there. It's just, it's very difficult to put anything there.
It's not easy.
The other issue too is, is that there's a house or a couple houses that have significant amount of screening right on Cross Street, and if you put the sidewalk in, you're you're cutting down all your screening, and you know, that's, are we meeting the intent of, you know, giving benefit to the residents of Cross Street in that case? So, um, but it's a fair point, because I know that was my first thought was, well, yeah, it's on the developer, but
Yeah.
the way it was drafted and I'll, I'll have all that for you. You'll see it. Okay, I get it, so.
And then my second question is, is there a dollar amount identified in the decision itself that they were gonna contribute to it?
Yeah, so actually, there was a surety that you, the board actually voted on for that, I think it was. For that, I think it was back. Maybe October of twenty twenty three, it was before I became the planner, but. I have it on file that there is surety for the sidewalks that was voted on, and.
They set aside.
And they set aside.
How much was that, was that?
I don't know off the top of my head, but it's significant, I, yeah, like, you know, it's in the six figures, so, well, into the six. So, um, and that's where we want to make sure that. What's proposed is going to meet the dollar amount of what was approved.
Right, now with the dollar amount, be given to the town, so the town could then go out and make the improvements, or would. Harmony still make the improvements on their own?
So Eastland is very interested in doing the improvements themselves, because, and I agree, because.
It's the cost.
Yeah, we, yeah, we run in, and they made it clear too, that, you know, we could do it that way, but. It would make more sense for us and them, for them to just do the work, because the dollar amount, you'll get more value for it, so. Anyway. That's what I have.
Now we call for a motion to adjourn, the votes.
Second. Ski, right?
Bill, I.
Bill, I.
Brian. Nick, I.
We're adjourned.